The February 16th meeting in the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners note the presence of all three members, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Dr. Wong to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for Commissioner comments, first, I'd like to provide an update on our ARPA pandemic recovery grant fund opportunity for small businesses, and I'd also like to introduce a new ARPA program for our local fire companies. Both of these programs are being administered by our recovery office. The Small Business Grant Program is focused on minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses. Last fall, the county allocated $2.65 million out of our pandemic recovery funds to our Small Business Grant Program. The program's focus is to help businesses impacted by the pandemic and related economic crises. It provides funds to qualifying businesses in Montgomery County which are either located in a qualifying community of Pottstown or in Norristown, or can show a financial loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Businesses can qualify for up to $20,000 in funds. The Recovery Office seeks to allocate at least 60% of available funds to businesses with less historic access to capital and/or owned by socially or economically disadvantaged groups. Since the start of the program last fall, 78 grant recipients have been selected or awarded. The office is continuing to accept and review applications on a rolling basis through the end of April 2023, so we encourage its businesses to apply soon. And if your business was not selected in previous rounds, you will be considered for the next cycle. There is no need to reapply. The Recovery Office will award up to $500,000 in grant funds every 30 days until all available funds are distributed. Application assistance is available by contacting PA Health Access Network at 610-750-8200, or by emailing moncoTA@pahealthaccess.org. Please visit www.moncopa.org Recovery Office for more information on how to apply, and please share this information with your networks. Next, I'm going to talk about our Fire Services Grant Recovery Program. The COVID-19 pandemic impacted Montgomery County Volunteer and Combination Fire Departments, including their ability to raise funds through fundraising and activities, and resulted in the loss of significant operating revenue for equipment and training. The Montgomery County Recovery Office has established a needs-based grant program in the amount of $1.5 million to provide assistance for lost revenue. In order to meet the grant requirements, fire departments must demonstrate pandemic-related economic impacts such as decreased revenue, loss of supplemental fundraising revenue, financial insecurity or hardship, increased costs, or challenges covering payroll, rent, or mortgage or other operating costs. The average grant amount is expected to be approximately $16,000. Final amounts will be determined based on a non-competitive formula which may incorporate general eligibility, the number of applicants, location, negative impact as a result of the pandemic, the number of firefighters, the size of the population served, or annual operating budget, and funding received from other sources. Grant awards will be posted on the Recovery Office website and our file. For more information, visit www.moncopa.org/recoveryoffice. And next, I'd like to thank the 65 employees who took time to sign up and donate for this month's Employee Red Claws Broad Drive, which is continuing through today. By the end of the drive, we are hoping to have collected approximately 50 gallons of blood for one in seven patients entering the hospital who will need a blood transfusion. Blood can only come from volunteer blood donors and must be completely replenished due to its short shelf life. So, thank you for providing hope and playing a vital role in the healthcare of patients in our community. And finally today, I want to comment on the three bids and requests for proposal that are going out. Letter J on the agenda, numbers three and four, and six, for the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library and the Trail Junction Center, all in Norristown. I'm calling attention to these particular projects because all of these projects and resources show our continuing investment in the municipality of Norristown. For the Norristown Public Library, the county has allocated $15.5 million through 2027 to address the aging infrastructure and provide significant upgrades to make the library a modern facility that can serve the community for the next 50 years. The building was originally constructed in 1976 and has seen very little renovation in subsequent years, and needs repair to continue operations. This library serves as the local branch library for the municipality of Norristown, as well as the county library and main service facility for four branch libraries and several bookmobiles. All of our libraries, and especially this one, play a vital role by providing the community access to information and resources regardless of socioeconomic status or location. It offers a safe and welcoming space for people to gather and learn. And next, the Trail Junction Center. The county has allocated $2.53 million through 2027, providing amenities and services for all trail users and a flexible community space. Based on recent community engagement feedback, the project will be guided by the following principles: sustainable design, universal design for users with varying abilities, and historic preservation. It will also provide a connection for the two most popular trails in southeastern Pennsylvania, the Schuylkill River Trail and the Chester Valley Trail. Norristown is our county seat, and I'm proud of these current investments that will benefit not only the residents of Norristown, but will bring visitors from around Montgomery County to experience not only the library and the trails, but all the other businesses and cultural centers that Norristown has to offer.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First, I want to start by thanking everyone who came out to our Super Bowl pep rally last Friday. Despite the tough loss, I know we're still reeling from that on Sunday. We still had fun cheering our hometown Eagles as they headed to the Super Bowl. So, thanks to Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board for pulling everything together and making the event such a success. Their planning and organization made it super fun for everyone at the event, and I hope everyone had a good time. I'd also like to thank Elmwood Park Zoo, Local 98, Norristown Area High School Marching Band, my alma mater, Norristown Fire Company, and the other participating vendors and sponsors for their support. Just next, I want to remind the public that we do have our final Black History Month event next week. The series will conclude next Wednesday, February 22nd, with an in-person event at Human Services Center in Norristown from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The in-person celebration will include live performances followed by lunch. I'd like to thank the members of the Montgomery County Black History Committee for putting together this important program and opportunity for discussion. So far, we've had hundreds of attendees tune in, watch our virtual sessions. The recordings of each of the sessions are now available to watch on demand by visiting our website at www.moncopa.org/blackhistorymonth. Thank you, and that concludes my comments.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to inform the public and those that are searching for employment if they're unemployed or searching for a new career path that there's an opportunity on Friday, February 24th, located at the Keystone Opportunity Center in Sauterston. That's at 104 North Main Street in Sauterston. The Pennsylvania Career Link is partnering with the Keystone Opportunity Center to provide that region of the county an opportunity to learn more about the process when applying for new job openings, resume critiquing, enrolling, and training for a new career path, and many other opportunities and resources are available at this event. It does require an appointment to attend, so please visit either the Pennsylvania Career Link website or the Keystone Opportunity Center website to RSVP and schedule an appointment for this event on Friday, February 24th, and it begins at 9:00 a.m. It goes till noon. And again, the address is 104 North Main Street in Sauterston. So, for those of you that are unable to get to the Pennsylvania Career Link office location in Norristown, this might be a good opportunity for you to attend and utilize your resources there.
Thank you. All right, we have one announcement or presentation today, and that's Dr. Wong, our Chief Medical Officer and the Regional EMS Director.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Alvin Wong. I'm in emergency position. I serve as the Chief Medical Officer for the Department of Public Safety. I wanted to take a few minutes, keeping with our theme of Healthy Heart Month in February, and talk about cardiac arrest survival here in Montgomery County. So, I wanted to go quickly over this chain of survival, which you heard about last time. And this chain of survival is really key to building our systems of pre-hospital care. Only by navigating smoothly through this chain of survival can our patients have a neurologically intact outcome after a cardiac arrest event. And where do we stand in the county? Going through some of the data that we have on our next slide, with our CARES data, since inception of CARES, we have participated in this registry, which is a comprehensive database involving both our EMS agencies and our hospital and health systems in the county to track the outcomes of cardiac arrest patients in Montgomery County. And we use cardiac arrest as a surrogate of the strength of our EMS system, knowing that cardiac arrests are only one of the many types of emergency calls that our EMS agencies respond to, but can show us how strong our system is. And I'm pleased to report that year over year, our Montgomery County EMS system shows greater outcomes than by benchmark the rest of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, of our cases of the Utschene cardiac arrest survival, these are patients who have a witnessed collapse by a bystander and are in a shock rhythm when EMS arrives. Last year, which is the last full year where data was available, 41.8% of those patients survived to hospital discharge. And that's a significant increase over what we see in the rest of the Commonwealth. And as a note, it is significantly increased for what we see in the rest of the country as well. I do want to make a quick note, in the media, we often see cardiac arrest patients portrayed in TV shows and movies. And in a study, 75 to 90% of those fictional cardiac arrest cases result in a survival. And in reality, unfortunately, that percentage is much less. So, this 41.8% use here is actually a tremendous number, and one that we should be proud of here in Monco. Next slide, please. We do look at other things in terms of how we get to that 48%, including how often does bystander CPR get utilized. And again, here in Montgomery County, our numbers are above what we see compared to the rest of the Commonwealth in terms of how often does a bystander who calls down and wants them to stay to give CPR to the person who needs help. Next slide, please. And we also look at the frequency of how often is a public AED used. So, not an AED that's carried by a police officer, an ambulance crew, or firefighter, but really one that's kind of stationed in a building or a school. And again, here in Montgomery County, we are far above what we see in the rest of the Commonwealth. So, thanks to everybody for their support of these initiatives. Next slide, please. But what I really want to talk about today is why all of these data matter, okay? And so, I'm going to take you back to a case that happened actually in early January, January 8th, 2023. And this is a 14-year-old male who was playing basketball at a school and collapsed suddenly. And the thought was whether or not he had a syncope episode, just simply passed out, or had something more serious going on. So, obviously, someone called 911. Our 911 call taker actually did some screening with the caller and provided instructions on how to do telephone CPR. So, over the phone, they gave just-in-time instructions for how to do CPR. The school was fortunate enough to have an AED which was positioned close to the gymnasium where this collapse happened, and an off-duty firefighter was actually nearby who also helped and performed CPR. A few minutes later, crew from Goodwill Pottstown and the Santa Toga Fire Company responded immediately. They were there within six minutes. The patient was treated, on scene, transported to Pottstown Hospital, and then subsequently transferred to CHOP Philadelphia, where he spent nearly a week in the ICU before making a full neurologically intact recovery. Next slide. So, with full permission of Miles and his family, please let me introduce you to Miles McDonough, who is the survivor of this event that we just discussed. And here he is, just a little bit after two weeks later, back at school on the same basketball court where he collapsed, having survived and had a hospital cardiac arrest, neurologically intact. And none of this would have been possible if there was a single broken link in this chain of survival. None of this would have happened if any of those individuals whose names you see on the right-hand side of the screen were not immediately there doing either their job or what they stepped up to do in a time of emergency and helped Miles get to where he is today. And so, you know, I wanted to express my sincere appreciation to Principal Palmieri, Pastor Maloney, and Athletic Director Andy Will, the call takers at the 911 Center, Karen Durstein and Dispatcher Steven Ziemba, who gave those TCPR instructions, the bystanders who did CPR, who used the AED, and of course, our paramedics from Goodwill Pottstown EMS and Santa Toga Fire Department, Paramedics Melissa Ortiz, Derek Dry, and ENT's Angela Urb, and Matthew Loomis, and the staff at Pottstown Hospital, Dr. Steven Spencer and the nursing staff there, as well as the staff at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and the ICU, and their nursing staff as well. Every single one of those individuals played a key in Miles's survival, and for that, we are deeply appreciative. Next slide, please. So, with that being said, there are five quick things I think that we'd like to talk about knowing about CPR and AED usage. So, bystander CPR doubles or triples even the rate of neurologically intact survival from cardiac arrest. And every minute that CPR is delayed reduces the chance to survive by 10%. So, with that being said, we don't want people to waste any time checking for a pulse. If you see someone who's not breathing normally and they're not responding, they need CPR. And you don't have to be squeamish. You don't have to do mouth-to-mouth. In fact, doing hands-only CPR is highly effective in both adults and teens. We also don't want people to be afraid of hurting the patient because any problems that are seen during CPR are not anywhere near as bad as not doing CPR at all. And don't be afraid to move the patient to the ground to get them on their backs so the compressions that you're doing can be effective. If you learn CPR, you're most likely to be able to actually help somebody that you know. In fact, 70% of cardiac arrests happen in the home, and learning CPR can be really simple. There are online videos and short classes throughout the county. Lastly, as a bystander, as a lay rescuer, you're never alone. Our 911 call takers are highly trained. They'll give you simple instructions over the phone on how to help, even if you've never... Next slide, please. I do also want to take a moment to talk about one of the innovative programs that we have here in Montgomery County, and that's called PulsePoint. And what PulsePoint is, is an application that can be installed on your iPhone or Android device. You can install it easily by scanning that QR code that you see on the screen or going to moncopa.org/pulsepoint. And what this will do is will notify you if you happen to be nearby of an individual who is in cardiac arrest and needs CPR. So, what you see on the left side of your screen is actually our PulsePoint map of an individual who had a cardiac arrest event. That's the little heart icon that you see that's at the little, you know, line through it. And you see the person icon, or two, actually, two of our MIH paramedics who just happened to be nearby at this cardiac arrest event. And they were notified in their PulsePoint app that that individual needed CPR. And it's, like I said, it's a free app. It only works, it only notifies you if the person who needs CPR is in a public place, and only if you're within a quarter mile of them. So, it's available to any resident here in Montgomery County. I would encourage everybody to install this application on your phone. Next slide, please. So, last thing, you know, what can all residents of Montgomery County do today? Number one is just know your numbers, right? So, see your doctor, get screened for high blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes, things that keep you healthy, right? Get screened on, get trained on CPR and AED usage, and call 911 if you see someone who needs help. I would encourage everyone to support your local EMS agency, right? They are the ones who are coming when that 911 call goes out, and they're the ones who need your support now more than ever, given the challenges our EMS system has faced. And lastly, install that PulsePoint app on your phone. So, with that being said, next slide, please. Our future goals for the county are really to increase the placement of public access defibrillators throughout the county, and to continue exploring technology solutions to get these defibrillators into service as quickly as possible. On the right, you see a picture of a new AED which has actually just been FDA-approved. The cost of this device is as low as $340 a year, and actually is connected to the cellular network and actually can give, can alert when there's a cardiac arrest nearby, as well as alert dispatchers if you have to use the AED because of a cardiac arrest. Now, this technology is becoming tremendously affordable and accessible. And then, obviously, we would like to continue increasing our support for the county's EMS system and our EMS workers who, day in and day out, are involved in rescues and resuscitations like we talked about today. Next slide, please. So, with that being said, I appreciate everyone's time today, and appreciate the opportunity to talk about PulsePoint and some of our cardiac arrest survival here in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Do we know how many defibrillators we have in public access?
So, there are actually thousands throughout the county. We recognize that not every single AED is reported. As part of PulsePoint, we actually do have a catalog of available AEDs and locations. And several years back, we actually ran a contest involving high school students and gave a small monetary prize for those who found the most new AEDs. And we'd like to do something like that again in the future to get locations updated throughout the county.
And if you can't get in-person CPR training, is the online training, it's better than nothing, right?
Absolutely, right. And CPR training can be as simple or as complicated as we want to make it. There are certainly classes for professional rescuers, but classes are available that you can watch in the comfort of your own home. And in the worst case, our dispatchers will give you instructions at the time of you calling 911 on how to do CPR.
No, no comments. Great presentation.
Dr. Wong, I'd like to thank you for the update today, and it's great to see that the PulsePoint program is continuing to grow across the county. I remember when that first kicked off, and we partnered with Narberth Ambulance and various other events like Plymouth White Marsh High School when they dedicated their PulsePoint system. So, it's important that the public's aware of the technology advancements we have to save lives. Never want to use this, of course, but it's important that they're aware of it, and they learn how to use it, and they utilize that service. So, thank you for all you do, and again, I appreciate the update.
Thank you. Appreciate your continued funding and support. Thank you.
All right, next up is public comment. Mr. Stein?
Thank you. All speakers should sign into the meeting sheet available in the back of the room or virtual, as indicated by Ms. Co. Francisco. All speakers must come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. Those seeking to speak during the time set aside for public comments on items appearing on the agenda must state the specific agenda items they wish to address. Those seeking to speak during the time set aside for general public comments must identify the subject matter that they wished to address. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business.
Objection.
The usual. Ms. Braccio?
The last time we were here, before the meeting started, you said, "I'd like to check it out with another lawyer."
Ms. Braccio?
And what I have here, I'm telling it to you now. Rules for public comments must respect the First Amendment rights of speakers. If you are limiting which opinions may be shared, you'll be held liable for violating the First Amendment rights. And that comes from Alan Dura, Vice President for Litigation at the Institute for Free Speech.
Thank you very much, Ms. Braccio. Your objection is noted.
And I want this to be in the minutes. And now, that's also violating my rights, okay? But you should know that, Perjero.
I second the objection made by Ms. Braccio on the record.
Understood. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor.
An objection for the record and motion to be laid upon the table.
That doesn't make any sense.
Oh, it does make sense. I have the objection to the time limit, and my objection is also for the agenda. We are not told details. Maureen does not come up here prior to the meeting. She starts the clock. Ms. Co. Francisco, you start the clock.
You are using your time now.
Okay.
Objection. You're not allowed to do that.
We aren't told to have time, the details. We aren't given sufficient amount of time. We're not given any amount of time here. We're just not. What's up with that, man? What's up with that? Mr. Giuseppe Monticelli, Concha Hockenborough, Springfield Township. Objection, and my motion to be laid upon the table is that we adjourn this meeting since this is a violation of the Sunshine Act. Do I have a second to my motion that I have laid upon the table?
I second that.
We have a second. Joe, do you want a second?
To adjourn the Commissioners' meeting.
To adjourn, because we are not given details. We're not. Okay, I stand down.
Very good. Whether a matter is germane to county business, determination to be made by the county solicitor. A time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether a matter is germane to county business once the solicitor has made a determination on such, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down, shall be grounds for removal or muting from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. And as always, the Commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at commissioners@moncopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. We'll start with public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Ms. Co. Francisco.
First, we have Pauline Braccio, who has Agenda Item Comments for Items E, F, and G.
Good morning, Pauline Braccio, Townesham Township. You have violated the First Amendment for the past three years, and you continue to do so. And again, as I said last meeting, you're running the show, which is ridiculous. But then, when Ken was trying to tell Mr. Shabini, he was like a monster instead of being polite and respectful, which is your duty to be to us. And Joe, you said in your comment that you wanted us to go back to having no limit, and yet, when Mr. Shabini was being cut off, you did not speak up and say, you as a Commissioner can actually say, "I want to hear the rest of what he has to say." You can do that. So, you know, just because you're saying, are you running for reelection? Because making statements like that and not backing it up isn't going to get you reelected. You really need to start saying that you want the two minutes to be abolished, because that is what you said. So, back it up. The government may not silence speech because it criticizes government officials, or employees, or their favorite ideas or initiatives, even if that speech does so in ways that many people find unpleasant. Allegations of hurt feelings, real or spurious, do not justify censorship of public speech. And that was the U.S. Supreme Court decision in the matter of New York Times versus Sullivan, and that was back in 1964. So, when I stand up here and I say that Ken Lawrence is a rapist, you can't shut me up, because one, it's the truth, and two, it should be noted, Stacy, in the minutes, exactly the words I use. Thank you.
Next, we have Giuseppe Monticelli, who has Agenda Item Comment on Items J1, 2, L1, K2, and M3 and 4.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Concha Hockenborough, and Springfield Township. First, we have here is J1 and 2. We have a bid for the public safety of landscaping at the safety training campus. Why is it we cannot have trustees from the correctional facility to do the landscaping services at the public training facility? I believe that can be done instead of wasting money. Why? They're already sweeping the floors inside the correctional facility. J2, it's going to be a bid for replacing the carpet in the 911 call center. Oh, wait. Is that the place that you hold the private press conferences at? Yeah. Yeah, sure is. I heard, why do we need replaced the carpet? Is there spilled coffee on that carpet? I object to J1 and 2. K2, we have a contract award. I appreciate Ms. Calder. She elaborated further on this. It's going to be an actuary machine. It's for the medical examiner for the corner. The only objection I would raise on this is this company has only installed 71 of these machines in North America. Let's get someone else. I object because of that reason. And $475,000, that's a bit extraordinary. L1, why are we spending another $32,000 for an amendment here? Deal with the windows. M3 and 4, dealing with license plate readers? Come on. Homeland Security? What's up, lad?
Your time is up.
Thank you, Josh. I stand down.
Next, we have David Morgan, who has Agenda Item Comment on Items J5 and L1.
Good morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler, and my apologies, Ms. Winder. I did not congratulate you. I'm the only one, I think, in the speakers last meeting. Sorry. Congratulations. So, I'm talking about these facilities. We have a facility of 18 West Aerie Street, and I think it's around the corner here. And so, the purpose of this building is very uncertain to me. It was acquired, I think, recently, in the last few years or so. And I'm thinking about best use of our areas, because we have this space, which I can imagine being a courtroom space almost. We have enough room, I think, for a courtroom. And yet, we have, we could replicate this down the hall and this way, and we have lots of rooms in this building. We have that building, and we have yet this project here, which is originally, the goal was $280 million, now it's $415 million, but I think it's exceeded. So, I'm wondering if you have six floors with three courtrooms on a floor, if that space could maybe be redirected to be three floors with six courtrooms on a floor. It's a better... better save our taxpayers the cost. This is, Ms. Winder, a long-term issue with me. I've been here about three years or more, talking about the cost for the county campus, and that is really driving a lot of the tax increases we've had, up to 21% in the last three years. So, I'd like that that maybe be considered by the Skankzach Forum. There's also a firm from, from the World Trade Center in New York, but I think that might be more expensive for our taxpayers. Also, Mr. Shabini has great ideas for saving tax rate, rate of money with the Norristown Company. I'll ask that he be able to be heard and, and have me have a meeting with him. I think it's great, what he's proposing. So, please, maybe describe the purpose of the 18 Mount Ware Aerie Street. That's not very much information here, and maybe the whole, the blueprints for across the street, the new Justice Center building. So, we really know, are there better ways of handling costs? Because we have apparently up to 2027 with construction allocated time.
Mr. Solciak, will you speak briefly about the plans for 18 West Aerie, please?
Absolutely. That building will be renovated for the use of our public defenders and their operation and representation of their clients. So, that will, renovating that building will give a publicly accessible space with very close proximity to the courthouse for the defenders and their clients.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to general public comment. We have Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Towneson Township. Just real quick, I just wonder how many of those heart attacks, cardiac arrests, were caused by the COVID vaccine? Right now, the last article I've read is that a new paper came out, 13 million people have died from the COVID vaccine. That's twice as many as COVID itself, and in the United, that's all over the world. And in the United States, over 670,000 people have died from the vaccine. And Paxlovid, which is supposed to be a treatment, actually has, it's almost a replica of the vaccine itself. So, when you're talking about transfusions, please, if anything happens to me, do not give me a transfusion unless you know that blood is from somebody who was not vaccinated. So, I just wanted to, real quick, state that. Also, Jamila, you talked, you quoted Dr. King, and, you know, you may have good character content, but Ken does not. He is a rapist, a felon, a coward, and a liar, and I don't think Dr. King would have approved of Ken sitting on this board. So, I just wanted to make sure that if you're going to use a quote from Dr. King, which I have also done, you should know exactly what he means, because the person sitting next to you does not have good character. And don't be worried, he won't rape you, you're not his type. It's just really amazing to me that Ken Lawrence is still on this board and that he's not going to leave, he's going to finish out his term. I think that is solely for the reason for him to manipulate the elections one more time, because since he's not running, he will continue to be on the election board. Whereas, if you are running and if Joe is running, you will not be on the election board. There'll be two goons from the judges, and I call them goons because they don't know what they're doing, even in their own courtrooms. So, I just, you know, we're on to you. Thank you.
You need to get some help.
I think you need to act of a man and fess up to what you did to me.
You need to get some help.
You need to act of a man.
I pray, I pray that you get the help that you need.
Didn't Josh tell you you're not supposed to?
I pray that you get the help that you need.
And I pray that you admit what you did to me.
Next, we have Giuseppe Monticelli for general public comment.
You get a minute. You get one minute. He used his time. You get one minute.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Concha Hockenborough. I pray that the Lord is with you, Ken, and is with this whole entire board. It was not Ms. Calder, but it was in fact Ms. O'Malley. Sorry about that. Joe, get a minute. It's better than 56 seconds, huh? You want to change it to 56 seconds? Joe, why don't you put where your mouth is? Mr. Shabini was up here. He travels here to speak to this board. He was pleading with you for those extra two sentences, and you didn't give him that. You talk about the unlimited timeframe, you could have came up and seconded that motion that Mr. Shabini was putting up to have his extra few sentences to speak. But you didn't want to. You want to go ahead and rerun on this board?
I'm going to ask you to sit down or be escorted out.
Objection.
You want to rerun?
Mr. Monticelli, please sit down.
Well, then you want to put your money where your mouth is. You want to go hands-on? Let's go hands-on, man. Let's go hands-on, man. Let's go hands-on.
Giuseppe, have a seat. No.
Termerly No v. Chicago. I still have my other minute, man.
You don't.
Why's that?
Because that's what they determined. Have a seat.
Who determined that? Josh?
Yes.
Josh, Ken.
Please sit down.
Have a seat.
Who determined it? Just tell me who determined that.
Giuseppe, have a seat. Come on.
Go hands-on, man.
Giuseppe.
Go hands-on.
Have a seat.
Go. Do you have a business card on you? Do you have a business card on you?
I do not.
Why don't you have a business card on you, sir?
To adjourn the meeting.
Can we under recess?
Go into recess.
Under recess.
Yeah, I'll suck it up.
You want to adjourn? No, you're not. We'll, we'll go on. Who do we have next?
Next, for general public comment, we have David Morgan.
I was rooting for the Eagles, too, and thanks for having the football rally. I'm talking about football and life, and there's been a threat of life through the latest action in the football. Tony Jungi, which is, who's a former head coach of the Indianapolis Colts, spoke about life, especially Damar.
County issues. Remember, this has to be about county issues. Items are issues that may come before the Commissioners for consideration or may-
Objection. Violating the First Amendment again.
Second the objection.
Do you not listen?
Please sit down, or else I have to have you escorted from the room.
You can't even do that.
Let's go hands-on, man. Let's go hands-on.
Which care continue?
Okay, clock's been running, I believe. So, I'm relating the theme of adoption, and Tony has adopted eight children, and he spoke for March for Life and mentioned about how Damar Hamlin was recovered from near death. We're all thankful for the prayers of that time, I believe. So, the lives of the born are, are still important to God, he said in his speech. Also, if one is pregnant, really, it's good to consider Pregnancy Resource Centers for Help and Adoption for the young people. I know someone who's written to me about this issue. Then Harrison Butker, the kicker who did the final score of the game, says all children, all human children are, should be protected at every stage of life.
Relate this to county business.
And so, I think it's good that we're supporting the positives, and life is a great opportunity, and football is a great way of just having great sport. I think also, it's great that we had Historic Black History Month, participated by two black quarterbacks, and as a reporter, and reporter, that Rihanna had a little guest at the ceremony being pregnant with a child. So, it's all wonderful.
I'm asking you very kindly to please find a way to relate this to county business.
Okay, an awareness of life-
All right, others will go in the minutes.
At the county, I think is real important. I think the measures the county have taken are just wonderful with the adoption recognition and with Monco Mama's, as you, thankfully, that you recurred with me last, you concur with me last meeting. So, loving them both, now that we're in the Valentine's Month of February-
Mr. Morgan, your time is-
Black History Month, and I think these celebrations are great.
I'm going to ask you to sit down.
No, come on down.
Give him two extra seconds, please, ma'am.
Next, we have Jim Thomas for general public comment.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you very much for all the work you do. And addressing the healthcare issue-
Sir, can you identify your stance by name and municipality, please?
Jim Thomas, Lower Gwinnett.
Thank you.
And in terms of taking, I'll just briefly speak to some healthcare issues, and then give, like, send some emails to document these facts. Number one, the SARS-CoV-2 spike protein in vaccine or virus form may be, may be harmful. And I encourage you to look into that, including the racial specificity of the SARS-CoV-2 spike protein, various aspects, the ACE2 receptor, furin cleavage site, TMPRSS2, as well as the CCR5 receptors. These all may be racially specific, and that may be why Native Americans, blacks, browns, Irish Italians are dying more than others. I also encourage you to look at some of the emails that were sent to you, to other Commissioners previously, including vitamin D and, and possible food shortages that were detailed two years ago. And I will send the emails again to hopefully help with that. We saw the physician, the R. Physician, talking about the abnormal EKGs. You've seen "Died Suddenly" as a trending hashtag. Many people are dropping dead from various causes, and we need to figure out why that is, why the increase in sudden deaths. And it may have to do with the prolonged cardiac rhythms, or abnormal cardiac rhythms, especially in our aviators, and we are, and they are modifying the aviation criteria for EKG values. I'll send some documentation for all these things to you in the near future. Thank you very much for your time.
We have a couple folks online. First, we'll go to Mari, or sorry, Marlene Laska. You can unmute.
Okay, I'm, I'm muted. Okay, this is Marlene Laska from Oaks Precinct, Upper Providence Township. I just wanted to cakar with the comments from Pauline, especially relative to the time limit, and also the vaccine, and the fact of it being a heart month, and the briefing that we just had about the heart, and that, you know, that, whether, whether the vaccine has had any bearing on the events of, you know, the heart attack events. So, that, you know, again, I, my main comment is that I agree with Pauline with the, both on the time limit and relative to the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Next, we have Jamie Mogul. You can unmute.
Good morning. First, I want to say, oh, Lower Marion, Jamie Mogul, President, also of the League of Women Voters of Lower Marion and Narberth. I do want to first say welcome to Commissioner Winder and recognize her appointment as it is significant, as the first black woman in this role, and particularly during Black History Month. So, I hope that you are the first of many to follow, that it becomes more commonplace. But next, I also want to thank the entire Board for their continued investment and support of voter services, particularly in your last meeting approving, funding, and preparing for the election, as I and many, and particularly you know, that we have elections every year, twice a year. I do want to also note the concern, though, with the rejection of Lower Marion Township's redistricting of their ward maps, and I hope that that can be resolved. Mr. Solciak, I'm sure you will be getting an email from me to follow up on that, and Lower Moreland and the other townships that have provided to you voter services and the Board of Elections of their redistricting of ward maps. But thank you, and thank you for all you do. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. We move on to approval of the minutes for February 2nd, 2023. I will make a motion to approve the February 2nd, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any Board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes, minutes are approved.
Resolutions. First up, authorization of planning assistance contracts for Collegeville and North Wales Borough.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have three, two three-year planning assistance contracts for your consideration. As you know, we offer the planning assistance contracts through a 50% subsidy, and 50% is paid for by the communities. Both of these contracts were initiated January 1st, 2023, and will continue through December 31st, 2025. The first one is for Collegeville Borough. We're working on a new Main Street zoning district for them, and once that's completed, we'll be doing a full update to their revitalization plan. One of the interesting facts with the zoning update is the cooperation of Arsinus College. They're not only a major landowner of the downtown, but they have found through their recruitment and retention process that the value of having a vibrant and active downtown, and that's one of the things they want to see improved in Collegeville, to help them maintain their student enrollment and, and actually grow it as well. So, that's a really good cooperative project that Collegeville Borough is working on. We also did a First Avenue Park concept plan for them under the previous contract, and so for that new three-year contract, the total cost is $77,868, with a municipal contribution of $38,934. The second contract for consideration is for North Wales Borough. We're actually in the process of doing a complete comprehensive zoning rewrite for them, including a new zoning map, and that's analysis that we go through to identify the districts that make most sense for, for combining or creating new districts. Following the completion of that, we'll be doing an audit of their subdivision land development ordinance and identifying improvements for the completion of that. That is also, again, a three-year contract. Total cost of that is $77,868, with a municipal share of $38,934. And that is correct. Both contracts are for the same amount. They're both for our standard contract process.
Okay, I'll get a motion on the table. I move that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance outlined below, and that the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any questions for Mr. Jerome? No? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next up is approval amendments to the collective bargaining agreement with ASME Local 676. Mr. Stein?
Yes, thank you. This is an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 676, as you said, representing the deputy sheriffs and other court-related offices. The current agreement is scheduled to terminate at the end of this year. However, due to concerns over retention and recruiting amongst deputy sheriffs, including the need to avert potential public safety issues in the future, the county has agreed to increase the wages for deputy sheriffs, as well as an increase for the other employees in that unit to bring them up to the same level of increase that we gave to all our non-represented employees, in exchange for an additional one year to that contract, taking it out till the end of 2024, which will be a value to the county as it allows to get over any inflationary pressures.
Okay. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the amended agreement between the County of Montgomery and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 676, covering those employees represented by this bargaining unit. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. I just want to thank our deputies for all the work that they do, and I'm pleased that the county was able to get this done. I also want to thank the sheriff for his advocacy on behalf of his deputies as well. Any further comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Approval of county signatories. Mr. Stein?
Yes. With the departure of Dr. Arkush, the addition of Commissioner Winder, and the elevation of yourself to Chair, now is a good time to take care of some housekeeping and adopt a new authorized signatories resolution. This will allow certain companies and banking institutions that require it to see who the authorized signatories are, which will be the three Commissioners, Lee, Barbara, and myself as Solicitor.
All right. I will make a motion that in accordance with the authority conferred by law, the individuals holding the titles, offices, or positions as described by County Solicitor Josh Stein are to be considered the proper county officials for the purposes of executing all manner of documents and performing all actions in connection with those items which have been duly authorized by the County Commissioners via resolution, ordinance, or other legally permissible means. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any Board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Motion passes. Ms. Calder.
Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department Personnel List. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
All right, thank you. I will make a motion to approve the February 16th, 2023 personnel presentation as given by First Assistant County Solicitor Maureen Calder and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. So O'Malley.
Yes, we have bids and RFPs. One bid on behalf of public safety for landscaping services at the public safety training campus. The successful responder will provide mowing, pruning, weed control, and seasonal cleanup services for the 2023 season. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two bid on behalf of public safety for replacement carpet in the 911 Center. The successful responder will provide specialty replacement carpeting for the 911 Center and related office areas. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for architectural and engineering services to upgrade the Montgomery County Narstown Public Library Building. The successful responder will provide architectural and engineering services to address the aging infrastructure and prioritize the library's operation as a modern facility to continue to serve the community. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for construction management services for the Montgomery County Narstown Public Library Building Upgrade. The successful responder will provide construction management services to include managerial services, pre-construction estimating, and consulting services for the Narstown Public Library Building Upgrade. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for construction management services for rehabilitation of the 18 West Aerie Street Building. The successful responder will provide construction management advisement services and collaborate with the county to enable renovation and rehabilitation of the building through a public low-bid procurement effort that is compliant with the Pennsylvania Separations Act. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Six RFP on behalf of the Planning Commission for Landscape Architecture and Engineering Services for the Trail Junction Center in Narstown. The successful responder will provide design drawings, construction documents, and all permit applications for upgrades to the exterior surrounding the Trail Junction Center Building. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website, www.montcopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs and bids as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
Yes. One contract award, information technology solutions licensing and support, CDW Government of Vernon Hills, Illinois, $82,195. Contract provides for election network DNA software subscriptions and Cisco SmartNet hardware support services. Services are available through Sourcewell Cooperative Contract. Two contract award, X-ray equipment, Lodax Systems, North America LLC of Painesville, Ohio, $475,000. Contract provides for a full-body imaging system for rapid assessment forensic pathology for use at the new Coroner Facility. Equipment is sole source. Three contract award, human resources insurance, Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry of Harrisburg, PA, not to exceed $65,000. Contract provides for the 2023 self-insurance workers compensation administration fund fees. Four contract award, public safety software, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $55,114.20. Contract provides for software maintenance of mobility licenses for public safety agencies in Montgomery County. Software is required for seamless connectivity of all agencies within Montgomery County and allows for connectivity to computer-aided dispatch and record management system. Contract is valid for the period of 3/21/2023 to 3/20/2024. Software is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Five contract award, purchasing, General Supplies, Amazon Capital Services Incorporated of Seattle, Washington, not to exceed $75,000. Contract provides for estimated miscellaneous purchases as needed by county departments through the Amazon Business Portal for the 2023 term. Items purchased are typically unavailable from our regular vendors or available from Amazon at a significantly reduced cost. Contract is available through an omni-cooperative contract. Six contract award, sheriff equipment, Atlantic Tactical of New Cumberland, PA, $55,212.30. Contract provides for 30 concealable bulletproof vests with accessories. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Seven contract renewal, information and technology solutions, staff augmentation services for SharePoint projects, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, $100,000. Contract provides for the augmentation of Montgomery County Information and Technology Solutions Development staff for SharePoint projects as per RFP 2163. This is the first of four optional annual renewal terms. Eight, contract renewal, information and technology solutions, staff augmentation services for Dynamics projects, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, $150,000. Contract provides for the augmentation of Montgomery County Information and Technology Solutions Developmental staff for Dynamics Development of projects for various Montgomery County Departments as per RFP 2167. This is the first of four optional annual renewal terms. Nine, contract renewal, Planning Commission Surveying Services, multiple providers. Contracts provide for surveyor services on a as-needed basis for farmland conservation projects, open space conservation projects, trail easement projects, and other transportation projects as required as per RFP 2050. This is the first of three available optional annual renewal terms. Providers are Cedar Real Engineering Group LLC of Pottstown, PA, Barry Isaac and Associates Incorporated of Allentown, PA, Gilmore and Associates Incorporated of New Britton, PA, Carroll Engineering Corporation of Warrington, PA, Herbert Rowland and Grubik Incorporated of Harrisburg, PA, and Bergman Associates of Rochester, New York, and Tracy Land Services of Hatfield, PA. And there is one contract and four amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract for assets and infrastructure, major construction projects.
One contract amendment, One Montgomery Plaza Design Services, NOR Design Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $32,400. Original contract provides for architectural and engineering services for the One Montgomery Plaza Reskin Project. Amendment provides for design of new parking access control devices at the existing entrances to One Montgomery Plaza.
All right, a motion to approve the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote. I voted against the original contract and all the amendments associated with it.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes two to one, with Commissioner Gale voting no. Awards of contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Yes, one contract award, personal protection equipment, Safewear Incorporated of Land in Maryland, $42,871.15. Contract provides for 25 sets of water rescue PPE, five sets per SEPA member county. Equipment is available through an omni-cooperative contract. Two contract award, hazmat equipment, Safewear Incorporated of Land in Maryland, $71,638.60. Contract provides for 22 certified multi-threat suits for the hazardous materials response teams in the region. Equipment is available through an omni-cooperative contract. Three contract award, automatic license plate reader equipment, Plate Logic LLC of Downingtown, PA, $25,560. Contract provides for installation of three automatic license plate readers with a maintenance program in Phoenixville Borough, Chester County. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four contract award, automatic license plate reader, managed services, Plate Logic LLC of Exton, PA, $124,200. Contract provides for program management and field support of SEPA RTF Automatic License Plate Recognition Program for the region's approximately 230 mobile ALPR units. RFP 2272 was viewed by 13 providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the specification of the RFP. Contract is for a period of one year with one optional annual renewal.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Closing commissioner comments, I have a brief comment. You know, we hear a lot here during public comment and people come to do that, but I heard something today that I've never heard before. We will not have our deputies or our security personnel threatened with acts of physical violence. You're entitled to your free speech. You are not entitled to threaten. That will not happen at this meeting. That will not happen at this meeting again.
I have no friend on, sir.
Our upcoming meeting dates is March 2nd, 2023. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the February 16th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting adjourned. I'll invite the controller to join us at the dais.
Yes. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board List. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
All right, hate to make you stand a little longer, but is there any public comment on Salary Board? There is none, okay. All right, then I will make a motion to approve the February 16th, 2023 Salary Board Presentation as given by the First Assistant County Solicitor Maureen Calder and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same.
So moved.
You're seconding there because I was still in the, yeah, I moved it.
Oh, I'm seconding.
Seconding by Controller Sanchez. I'm sorry for leaving you out there.
That's all right.
Is there any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Can I have a motion to adjourn the February 16th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting adjourned.